Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington. This is a special council work session meeting specifically regarding the fiscal year 2026 budget. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information from staff members or consultants. Citizens can attend and observe work sessions, however, this meeting will not include public hearings. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session. This budget workshop is streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the Town of Lexington. I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Ginny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And Councilmember Will Allen is not with us tonight. I would like to call the meeting to order. Council met in executive session before this meeting where we discussed the following matters permitted by South Carolina Code 30-4-70A. Discussion of Personnel Employee Handbook and Compensation Plan. Discussion regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyle, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand and it is unanimous. We will move into tonight's proposed, the fiscal year 2026, proposed budget for general funds and when we start with Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got Stuart Ford, our Assistant Administrator, and Ms. Kathy Farr, our Finance Director, who will lead us off in the presentation. We'll have Kathy get us started.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
So tonight we'll be discussing the 26 budget. The chart, ooh, that's kind of small. The charts show actual numbers through fiscal '24 and then budget numbers for '25 and '[158.76][158.76]'26. And in your budget packet where the actuals are estimated in the budget document, revenues are projected on the nine months of current year collections and 10 years of historical data. That's just so you know how we came up with the numbers. The expenditures are projected based on the department manager's estimates to maintain existing service levels. So the first chart here, even though it's hard to read, shows the revenue growth in the general fund. We've increased the budgeted revenue in the general fund by $1.2 million or 6.8%. This is due to anticipated growth in property taxes, franchise fees, and business licenses. We've estimated these categories to increase $300,000 for property taxes, $350,000 for franchise fees, and $364,000 for business licenses. Recent annexations play a part into this as well as expected growth in local business revenue and utility revenue. We've also increased the budget for interest income by $110,000. So far in '25, we've collected $300,000 and we're budgeting $310,000 for the next fiscal year. So our next chart shows a picture of the various components of revenue for fiscal year '26 as a pie chart. Of the franchise license and permits, 69.5% is business license, 24% is franchise fees, and 6.5% is permits. Then our next couple charts talk about expenditures. This one shows the growth in expenditures over time as the town have grown, the expenditures have grown. And you'll see that the top line, you can't read it, but the red one is total expenditures and under that is the Police Department there, 47% of our, well, I guess that kind of goes into the next one. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So 47% of the money goes to public safety and of this 8.8 million or approximately, of this 8.8 million, approximately 7 million or 80% is for their salaries and benefits. The remaining general fund expenditures are split between parks and community services, transportation, municipal court, planning, and general government. Of the 4.8 million budgeted for parks, 34% or 1.7 million is for sanitation services. This shows our legal debt margin here. Our debt margin is based on assessed value of property, so 8% of the total assessed value is what we can borrow without having a referendum. We've got $8 million that is a bond anticipation note in the general fund, so that's taken up 2/3 of our available borrowing capacity, which leaves about $4 million that we are still able to borrow without a referendum. Then this chart shows our positions. The Police Department has the largest number of employees in the general fund with 68. This chart here does not include positions asked for in the new budget. We'll add that if they're approved. Then we've added the hospitality tax chart to show you how hospitality tax revenues have grown. And then we have our impact fees and that's how we've collected impact fees over the years. And that is my presentation.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the budget with you this evening. I wanted to take a moment to just cover the capital improvements plan in general for the general government. You've got the plan in the budget document on page 75. I want to tell you a couple of things. The CIP was developed with all the projects that we knew were on the board and we've tried to estimate what's going to be completed by the end of the fiscal year this year and then go from there. Now, that will be refined slightly. We're going to try to make it as current as possible, so by first reading, going to update our anticipation for what happens between now and the end of June, just so that it's as accurate as possible going forward. You understand, of course, with capital projects, the timing of the projects is dependent on so many factors, but we've tried to estimate in consultation with Randy and our engineering partners to make it as realistic as possible and then to systematically identify the various funding sources. So what I wanted to touch on briefly was just the big picture of the capital project budget for the next five years, a five-year window. Total project cost, we're at $63.4 million. That's all of the road projects, that's everything related to the general government that we've talked about. And then we've identified a list of 12 or 13 various funding sources, from the hospitality tax being the largest at $35.3 million, impact fees, the state money that we receive appropriated from the General Assembly, $16 million. We're going through the process of applying for grants through both the state and the federal government. We understand, you know, that is a difficult process, but we're hopeful for some federal awards in '26. Use of ARPA funds, alcohol permits, the local ATAX. Part of what's in the budget deals with the Bruner Road coverage storage, so the utility budget will contribute part of that. We have had long-term plans for TIF financing of part of the improvements at Corley Mill Road. And then what we deem as short-term financing, meaning that it's going to be repaid rather quickly and within a year or two, maybe three years systematically. And then you'll see there, money's transferred in from the general fund that we had discussed for the road projects. What we've tried to do in developing this five-year plan is, first of all, minimize the amount of borrowing that we have to do. That's always been our goal, is to be as much of a pay-go operation as possible. Secondly, we want to look for opportunities to increase the flexibility that this council and future councils have as they determine what to do with the resources the town has. And so I wanted to mention that because you see that the balance at the end of the five years currently would show that we would have $9.4 million in the bank. And that's after having completed every project that we've discussed to do. We currently have, as Kathy mentioned a couple of slides back, about $8 million in general obligation debt. We borrowed that as general obligation bands. We borrowed that money as the funding source, the initial funding source for major projects. Ice House Pavilion, the Gibson Pond Dam, Virginia Hilton Park, Clark House, those are the main projects that were funded with those general obligation bands. And from the start, we were recognized that there would be some combination of funding for the ultimate repayment of those, whether it was from straight geo-bond financing or possibly H-tax bonds or impact fee bonds or using revenues to repay the debt and not financing it long-term. What we are going to propose and get your direction on or your consideration of this option is that we have on hand $12.5 million in H-tax funds that we've accumulated for H-tax projects. And one of the things that we can do is we can use that funding to pay off those bonds so we do not go into debt. We relieve ourselves of the debt. Even when doing that, we can complete all the projects that we've done or committed to and plan to do over the next five years. This will make sure that the money that we have is being used productively and reduces the amount of borrowing we would have to do. We also are proposing that we use the H-tax funds for as many eligible road projects and other projects that we can to get the most value out of the resource that we have in H-tax. And so Town Council, when we adopted the H-tax, identified tourist destinations and identified the major thoroughfares in the Town of Lexington that provide access to tourist destinations. And so we would propose that we use our H-tax funds for road projects that improve the capacity, improve efficiency, safety along those major thoroughfares, which would be an expansion of what we've committed to initially with just the three major projects, but also by utilizing the funds on hand to pay down our debt, we are putting the Town of Lexington in a position to have as much flexibility going forward as possible. Now, your options will remain in place. You will always have the option to finance projects using hospitality revenue bonds, impact fee revenue bonds, or general obligation bonds, but there is no pressing need to do that today. And so we bring that plan to you just as an update to the overall financing plan and wanted you to be aware of that, that thought process that went into the developing of the five-year CIP. So that's what I wanted to bring to you. That would wrap up our general presentation to you. And I think Rachel is going to mention a few things from her point of view that were important in the process of formulating this draft budget.
Thank you, Stuart. Turn that off. Thank you, Stuart. So at our last budget workshop, we focused solely on the Enterprise Fund, which is our water and wastewater. So tonight, what we're calling our general fund budget workshop includes not only general fund, but as Stuart mentioned, all of the other ancillary additional funds that we have such as H-tax, et cetera. So I wanted to point out just a few of the highlights for you all before we turn it over and have you all ask us questions. Like when we did the Enterprise Fund budget workshop, we've provided you detailed backup information. So everything should look the same to you. You've got what we have proposed for our budget document pages, followed by the details of what makes up every department budget. We furthermore have the list of the requested new positions as well as all of the capital items. It does also include the list of capital items compared to what was approved compared to what was requested. I do want to point out that there are some departments that might show a significant increase or decrease in year-over-year in certain categories. In some instances, that's related to the reorganization that we did effective in January, so there are some entire departments that were moved from one and into another. So if you see some really large changes, just keep in mind it could be related to The budget that's in front of you for consideration has no property tax increase. All of the new requests that we have, we've been able to absorb. Probably our largest increase that's making the biggest impact on us is the change in our sanitation service provider. When we had to go out for bid this year after having a very nice contract for 10 years, our rates did go up. And as we did that, we determined that we'd have a new method of collecting the yard debris and as such, we will need an additional person to help facilitate that in our Parks and Community Services Department. So within this budget, you'll see we do have a new position request for that department. We also have a full-time position request for our Transportation Department. This would be an engineer position. Our goal would be to hire an engineer in training to assist Randy within transportation, take on a number of the projects that Stuart just mentioned and everything else that we have going on. We have a new full-time four-legged request, a new K-9, to purchase a K-9 training and all the vet services in our Police Department. And in general, across all departments, there are a number of new softwares, software upgrades, or increased costs for everything software associated. That is the future of the world and we are definitely feeling it in our budget. However, the software programs that we utilize help us to be more efficient, more modern, and to provide the best service. And then separately, there's a number of equipment replacements in here. I will say the only vehicle replacement that we have are within our Police Department, separate from a specialized trash truck that we have in our Parks Department, but otherwise, it's important for us to provide these key resources for employees to keep everybody safe and keep us running as efficiently as possible. So those are very high-level updates for you all. We figure we take this opportunity to turn it over to you, ask you questions, what you have in general, or any department-specific questions.
Yes, sir.
Stuart, put you on the spot. I don't need it all, but I think I saw that number of capital improvements at $63 million. The big, the real big chunks of that are the Corley Mill project, the big intersection project there, the one at North Lake and Sunset. Those are two big ones. I think we recently approved about $4 million in paving projects on town roads throughout town. Is there, is there another big piece of that pie or after that, do they all get small? If it's a bunch of small, we don't need to change. I'm just wondering what the major pieces of that were.
Sure. So you've hit the major highlights, of course. You're exactly right. Let's see. Within this plan are the adopted capital improvements for, that were adopted with the impact fees. So all of those are in there. As well as some stormwater projects, smaller stormwater projects, the, all of the various H-tax projects that you mentioned, we...
So there's no buildings in there that I'm unaware of or that I should be aware of, but I'm not...
The only buildings would be related to what was adopted in the impact fee budget, which is the Bruner Road coverage storage and the potential for parks, facilities, you know, in the out years.
Right.
That, you know, ultimately would come back to you for your blessing.
Okay, all right. So all of it being, it's fair to say it's 90% transportation.
Huge amount.
Overwhelming majority of it is our roads, transportation, efficiencies, intersections and such. And then, and then your recommendation, I was trying to try, but your recommendation as far as cash on hand versus utilizing our cash on hand, and I know years ago when interest rates were right, that our borrowing, we could get short-term bond anticipation notes at 2%, 3%. What's the rates right now? Because I think all these municipal bonds, right, that are tax-free investors, no matter which category they fit in, so I know they carry a lower rate. What is that rate like if we were to go to market right now and try to get financing against future revenues in ATAX or for some scenario?
So the rates have gone up sharply over the past few years and even in the last six weeks, short-term rates have gone up dramatically. We did the Corley Mill, we did the Corley Mill financing in March for a one-year deal and the rate was 2.95 yield to the investor. Not too bad. We come back a couple of weeks ago to do the Ice House deal and we go to the market and it's in the midst of the craziness of the recent market, bond market. You've probably heard about the, the bond market being in somewhat disarray. The, the rate in just a matter of a few short weeks ended up, we ended up at a 3.85. So a significant increase in, in short-term borrowing cost. I haven't ever seen that in all of these years. If you're going out 20 or 30 years, you know, you're at 5% or 6% right now, I believe, around 5%. The, the other piece of the puzzle is the Town of Lexington has the TIF district financings that will be going for permanent financing in this coming fiscal year. And so we are, we're in a position where the TIF revenues will offset a substantial portion of that, but we have to be prepared, as we've talked about, we have to be prepared if the TIF revenues aren't sufficient, that the, the general fund will pay for the difference. So even by paying off the general obligation debt, we still will have potentially some costs related to debt service related to these TIF notes. So in terms of the flexibility that paying off the geo-debt gets you, it relieves with all of the increased costs that, that we've experienced, especially with the garbage and other costs, this will reduce the amount of outlays that will have to be appropriated for, for debt service. Would, you know, there is a naturally, I mean, $12 million sitting in the bank generating 4% interest is valuable. But that, that interest rate is likely to come down over the next, you know, year or so. But if we went to the market in the higher interest rate environment that we are in now, we're stuck at least for 10 years with those higher rates. And so I think it would be prudent to take advantage of the opportunity we have to, to pay off that.
And, and that general obligation debt that we're talking about paying off, what percentage is that at?
It's going to be those same kind of rates.
Okay.
You know, it's going to be greater than the short-term rate of 3%, probably less than 6%, but we're talking for 25 or 30 years. You do generally put in there the option to pay off after 10, but you are basically locking yourself into a high-rate environment for, for about 10 years.
Yeah, it's a minimum 10-year note. You can't, you can't prepay it.
That's generally speaking, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, maybe Rachel or Stuart. I noticed going across, and I'm probably not going to get an exact number, but that workers' compensation insurance has gone up by my calculation about 30%. Is there a factor that's driving that? And just for your reference, it's about $46,000 increase. Is there a reason that that's going up significantly across each department?
Do you have anything for that, Maureen?
That was the projection that workers' comp gave us based on salaries.
Okay. I don't know if that's something that we would want to look at. It just seems like a pretty substantial increase year-over-year.
Gavin, ours went up quite a bit in our company. I mean, it was a massive increase this year, so it may be just across the board for insurance.
Yeah, I have no clue. It just caught my eye. I noticed as I was reading through each department's budget that workers' comp seemed to be one of the ones that was going up almost each time. There were only a few departments that it was a net reduction, so. So I also noticed in the administration budget that Town Topics went up by about 32%. Can you help me understand why that budget has increased so much?
So we actually had a discussion about that. The quality of the paper that we use had a cost increase. And so in visiting with finance, we asked them to get quotes for some other options that may end up being a lower-quality paper, but that would be a savings. We have postage costs that have gone up and continue to increase plus as we bring on more homes, so all of that together.
Could we also like look at other vendors to print that? Like is there, you know, I don't know, I actually don't know who prints the bills. Like could we get bids on that or something to see who could give us a better price?
So it's my understanding that we could not do that because the company that prepares our statements also prepares the newsletter and they package it and put it all together for us. So we don't have the additional burden of packaging all that together.
Couldn't we shop the whole thing out?
I suppose we could.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, it was a $5,000 increase. Is that right?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't think I have it in front of me. Actually, I do have it in front of me. It is a $18,000 increase. No, I'm sorry, you're right, Rachel. It's a $5,000 increase, yeah. I know it's small pennies, it just, it caught my eye. And then I noticed that contractual services for the Finance Department went up by about Could you just help me wrap my head around what we use those contractual services for and why they went up by 230%?
A big portion of that is our new software that we purchased for the budgeting and act for reporting. In the past, we've done that very manually. We download stuff from Tyler and we put it in Excel and it's very labor-intensive and very apt to have mistakes in it because when you change one number, it affects every, it affects multiple pages. So that's true for the budget document as well as the financial statements that we have to prepare. And so you can see, if you look at the detail, you can see we've added $43,000 for that software.
Mm-hmm, I did see that.
And that's, that's the big part of it.
So it's really like the onboarding, getting that software working?
That's annual cost.
Oh, it's an annual cost? Okay. Okay. And then I had a question also for Chief. I noticed, Chief, that your overtime is up by like 30%. I just wanted to know from our perspective, is that... I just wanted to know, from our perspective, is that a result of you needing more manpower? Is that normal?
I think a lot is we have to now man the amphitheater. So every time the amphitheater have an event, that's two to three officers placed there. Another cost is when we were down that manpower, you have people in the academy, you have people in field training. So if somebody calls in sick, somebody has to be called in. So that's another reason for overtime. But a lot of the overtime is from events that we have to supply manpower to.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed it. It didn't, I mean, I trust you, but I just noticed, it just caught my eye, and I thought, well, does he need more officers?
Yeah, we need more officers, always. Please.
Thank you, Chief. And then I have one last question. And Rachel, you and I have already kind of talked about this, but I'm probably going to ask it every budget cycle, is that, is there anywhere in the budget that we could look to do some small mileage reduction for our citizens? Is there any, you know, way that we could adjust this at all to offer some sort of relief, especially in the inflation that we're dealing with currently?
That's not something I can answer at this time. We'd have to take it back and look. I can tell you that we left a lot on the cutting room floor of essential personnel needs, to include the Police Department, essential equipment that we need as well. So the budget that we have built is the minimum that we can do to remain effective and efficient. We'll certainly take a look, but there's always more needs than we could even afford.
Okay. Thank you for answering that, and I'll just say, thank y'all for putting the budget together. I have made it through all eighty-three pages. I'm not going to say that I've wrapped my mind around all eighty-three pages, so I may have more questions at next week's council meeting, but I just want to say thank you. I know all of us appreciate all that y'all do to put the budget together, and you guys do a great job, so thank you. I'll yield back.
Mayor.
Yes.
Rachel, on page five, shows council and town hall org chart.
I'm getting there, pardon me.
Sure, that's okay. Under, it's got Town Council, and it's got Town Administrator, Town Attorney, but the Municipal Clerk was somehow put underneath Town Administrator. That's not our normal operation, so can we get that corrected on this chart?
Absolutely, that was an error.
Okay, thank you. And then on the Personnel Assistant under Town Attorney, that was, because we're talking about hiring only one attorney this time, we've got to put an assistant in there to help with paperwork.
Are you talking?
That's not an assistant, that means assistants. He helps the Town Administrator with H.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha, okay. Thank you.
It's a function, not a position.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anybody else, Todd?
No, I don't have a sniper rifle tonight.
Jeannie?
No, I'm good.
I appreciate y'all putting this together too, and all the hard work, because I know it's a lot of hours. Any other questions? Now, next week, is it entitled only, only? The reading?
We plan to bring you the documents that went out previously.
Okay. Okay.
Next week will be the first reading, and we'll have the budget backup posted.
And then the second reading and the public hearing is?
June second.
June second.
Or, the June meeting, let me check.
It's June second. Is there anything else that y'all need to discuss or needs to be discussed tonight? Hearing known without objection, we are adjourned.